Meaning that the board has powers and procedures resembling a court of law, and we are obligated to objectively determine facts and draw conclusions from them in order to provide a basis for official action. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. And decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For this virtual meeting, members of the public will be automatically placed on mute until such time as the meeting is opened for public questions or comments. At that time, members of the public will be unmuted, and they may provide verbal questions or comments as appropriate. Members of the public may also direct comments to Ms. Tally via the chat or question or answer function on the meeting platform in case we cannot iron out any difficulties with setting up the audio link. And as a last resort, questions can be emailed to miss Tally at JTally@montclairNJUSA.org. That's J T A L L E Y at montclairNJUSA.org. First thing in our agenda this evening is our roll call, and I am here.
Vice Chair Brodak.
I'm here.
Mr. Graham.
I'm here.
Mr. Ian Wally.
Here.
Ms. Lockman. Counselor Schleger.
Here.
Mayor Spiller.
Present.
Ms. Willis.
Here.
Mr. Gilmer.
Here.
And Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
All right, we have our minutes from our April 12, 2001 meeting. And there was some edits that were submitted by Carmel, I believe. And when I looked at them, I had some questions about how she had characterized some comments that were made during the meeting. And so I went back and I looked at the recording of the meeting, and I would like to suggest some new language. This would be on page three of the minutes. And there's a passage in the first, I guess, full paragraph that's set forth on that page where it says, Mr. Nice stated that the board should consider each application. And I'm okay with the language that, or in the changes that are prior to that. But after, after that, each application, I believe, as Carmel edited, the language read that each application should consider each application as chapters in a book. And the next language that she had after that, and you come to the end of one chapter and has a new day. I'm sorry, I'm reading, I'm reading my edit. Because I went back and I listened to what Mr. Nice said. And what he actually said is that you come to the end of one chapter, and it basically comes to a close. He quoted a word in French that I cannot spell. So I'm not going to attempt to put it into the minutes. But basically, he said that you come to the end of one chapter, and then you move on to the next chapter, and it's a new chapter. Once a resolution is adopted by the board, that closes the chapter. And then according to, you know, what I saw in the recordings, and Mr. Nice indicated that the board may not prevail in court should it deny the application as the applicant has presented sufficient evidence that supports its view, and it will depend on the strength of what the board would possibly base a denial on. That's not an exact quote, because there was a lot of conversation that went on during the course of that between Carmel and Mr. Nice. But that was how, that was the sudden substance of what I got from listening to the full conversation. And I'd like to propose that we change the minutes to reflect that correction. I'm sorry that I didn't submit that to any of the board members to read beforehand. It got lost in my outbox, unfortunately. So if you want, we can carry this to the next meeting and so that you have a chance to read the amended language. And then we can proceed on that, if everybody's comfortable with that.
That's good, that's good for me. The next meeting is May 17.
Well, I'm comfortable with that.
Are you deleting anything that I wrote, or are you just adding to it?
I'm deleting some of what you wrote and editing. That's why I wanted to, you know, that's why I'm suggesting that maybe it's better if we hold off on it so that you can see how I edited your comment.
Yeah, because I also listened to the tape before I wrote this. So I think it might be better if we.
And then if, and yeah, and then once you read it, then if, if you want, we can talk about it if you disagree with the way that I've, that I've interpreted also, okay?
Okay.
All right, great.
Sounds good.
All right, so that sounds like a plan. We will carry this to our May 17 meeting. And that brings us to the resolution now on 224 Lorain Avenue.
And I believe there were some minor changes from Mr. Vice Chair Brodak on this, which Arthur has, will address.
And I believe I also had some changes.
Yeah, I think Ms. Lockman had some changes as well.
Right.
Okay. Are there any, any further changes?
I hope that we accept the resolution as amended by Ms. Lockman and our vice chair.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I think Mr. Jacobson and Mr. Graham have abstained.
I said aye.
I said aye. I mean, I, I, I'm an alternate, so I don't even know when I'm allowed to vote. But I, I do not, I neither abstained nor voted. No, I'm an aye if I count.
All right. That brings us to, back to our application on the Orange Road parking deck. And we have a document that was circulated by Mr. Nice for our consideration.
Just for clarity's sake, normally I would circulate a resolution, but obviously the board has not yet voted on the application. I was charged with working with the applicant's attorney to see whether or not we could come up with some potential language for the conditions paragraphs of the potential resolution. On Friday evening or early, late afternoon, I sent out to the board the latest iteration of the resolution that had been sent back to me by Mr. Troutner. And I forwarded to the board some comments about the nature of the discussions that I had had with Mr. Troutner and certainly with Jerry Giozza concerning the parking deck. I tried to give a fair and balanced approach to the, to the board in my email. And I imagine it's really up to the board to decide whether the, this, the current language offered by Mr. Troutner is the way you want to go or not. But this is, this appears to be the best that he and I could, and I'm not entirely in agreement with it, but this is the best, this is where we seem to be as the result of perhaps two or so weeks of discussions and going back and forward. So that's, that's pretty much what I think you see in front of you. Is that the latest iteration, Janice?
That's what I have, yeah.
Mr. Nice, you said you're not entirely in favor of it. Is there a particular point that you think we should be aware of? Would you like to point out to us?
No, you, my suggestion would be to read all of the language that's there. Bearing in mind, this is just a, just a small part of the resolution. This is not, not even the entirety of the conditions and paragraphs that would wind up in the resolution. But again, I don't know what to write until the board decides the application.
Well, the thing that I was interested in was that I thought our discussion at the board meeting had been that because the board does not have any enforcement powers, that the township would be the vehicle used to set up some standard. And as the minutes had read, it was that there would be some performance standards that the township could, if there was something written about how the township would do it. We don't have enforcement powers. So what happened to that? Is that something that just didn't work out?
If you're asking me that, no, it's not that it didn't work out. There was an attempt by Mr. Troutner in his last paragraph to provide a mechanism for, for enforcement by the town. And so, for example, we came up, and this is, this was really manufactured out of whole clock. But the notion of a structured parking subcommittee of the board, as, as all of you know, this doesn't exist. But perhaps the mechanism to create enforcement would be to have the structured parking subcommittee meet with the applicant in the event there is an issue or problems that come to the attention of, of the, of the township. And by that, I mean the people, even on this board. And if that could not be worked out, if those issues were such that they could not be worked out, then it would, as you see in the last sentence of Mr. Troutner's iteration of this, we, the board, could declare, or the structured parking subcommittee could declare that the applicant is in breach or in violation of the resolution, and also recommend to the township council that litigation against the applicant be commenced. Now, that changed a bit. Originally, I provided that we could have arbitration because of the relative speed by which arbitrations are heard versus litigations. But it appears that the applicant did not want to take that out, or did take that out. Mr. Troutner, I think, who can very well speak for himself at some point, but he wanted me to remind the board that the violation of a resolution condition paragraph is the equivalent of the violation of a zoning ordinance, and the zoning officer could also take steps to enforce. But he and I didn't work that through. He just, he just mentioned that as something that the board could also consider in terms of its, in terms of enforcement of the resolution conditions. Ms. Willis, you're absolutely correct. There's no, this board does not have the ability to enforce its own resolutions.
Yes, we don't have the ability. So we had attempted to turn it over to the town, but they bumped it back and said, work only with a committee of the board. And if that doesn't work out, then, then go to court. So I, it's a little, it's a little less than I had hoped for in that sense. But I understand what happened. I read both drafts of the resolution. They seem to be exactly the same. You had two copies that you sent to us? Is that, not a resolution, the two copies of the statement?
Yes. I realized subsequently that Mr. Troutner had sent me the same document in both PDF as well as in Word. So yes, my apologies.
All right. But, but I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments about the document? Well, it doesn't seem to be anyone has anything to say about it. I join with what Carol has said. I was a bit disappointed.
Mr. Chairman, if possible, certainly, I didn't mean to cut you off. I, I could, I guess, elaborate in terms of, you know, my thoughts with the applicant's thoughts in terms of some of what Mr. Nice just repeated or mentioned.
By all means.
Certainly, thank you. So, you know, look, we, from the applicant's standpoint, and we appreciate Mr. Nice and Mr. Giozza's help in terms of trying to get to, you know, a comprehensive condition that would address three notions. One, the, the idea of a performance standard, and we struggled to come up with something objective whereby the applicant is really being held to something that the, a subcommittee could find it reasonably objectively is in violation of. And that being, the applicant shall maintain adequate valet staffing at all times. And there's a metric in here in terms of, at least at a minimum standard, how many valets are supposed to be there in the event that there's an excess of vehicles above the amount of self-park spaces in the garage. The second issue goes to how would that be monitored? And in this proposal, it conditions it's monitored by way of detailed summary reports issued on a quarterly basis, which would have not only the information regarding the number of cars that were in the deck, indicating at a certain point that valet parking was necessary, as well as records regarding the fact that actual valets were present on site. And then additionally, it opens up for the township to make onsite observations and conduct parking counts to see what's going on in the deck. And then that we came up, the, the subcommittee concept is, it's really, it's a relief valve so that in the event that things are not working and the subcommittee's expectation of what the applicant testified to as to how the operation would occur in a safe and efficient manner, that there could be steps addressed at that subcommittee level as to how maybe it could be corrected. And if the fear is that the applicant would be unreasonable or engaging in bad faith, and the subcommittee believes that the applicant is in violation of either the testimony it presented to this board that led to an approval, or is strictly speaking in violation of the condition of approval, which is that is the applicant shall maintain adequate valet staffing at all times. And I, I guess I would reiterate based on the testimony the board heard that, you know, the solution or the key to the applicant's valet plan is having an adequate number of valet staff to effectuate it. That, and as Mr. Nice just pointed out, there's well-established case law that provides for two options, and they're, they're fairly draconian from the applicant's point of view. One is going to court for specific performance or injunctive relief to stop the applicant from doing whatever bad acts the fear is the applicant is doing. But strictly speaking, you don't even need to go to superior court to seek an injunction or specific performance. You could actually go to municipal court. The zoning officer can issue a violation, just like somebody illegally built something on their house. It's a fine per day. It's, it's, it's a fairly significant issue if the applicant was to find itself in the position of the township. Or the, and I guess it's really the township and the zoning officer. It's not the planning board independently. But nonetheless, somebody is seeking to enforce a condition against the applicant as if it's a zoning ordinance violation. That's a fairly substantial penalty for, for an applicant to face. And that's, you know, in terms of if the board is concerned is that this doesn't provide really any enforcement mechanism. You know, we respectfully submit, or hopefully you, you know, consider what I've just said as, as doing, you know, just that.
I guess my one comment to that is that we can already do that. And the township can do that. When I say we, I mean the township. I mean, part of the main, I guess, disappointment that I have is, is, as Carol said, this puts it in the purview of the, the planning board. And I think that, I think this just goes way beyond what the planning board is supposed to be doing in its role in the town. And the accountability has to be, and should be to the town. And, you know, the town, you know, at the very least can, if it feels that the parking is not working and that it's not in compliance or up to snuff with what was promised when the resolution was approved, the township can issue, you know, a notice of violation and put the onus on the applicant or whoever is the owner at the time when such violation would occur to come and improve that they're in compliance. They can already do that. This doesn't really establish too much more, you know, other than putting, creating a committee within the planning board to, for oversight.
And my apologies, Mr. Chairman. I, I thought the, the planning board wanted the, the committee. And again, we were struggling to find, you know, the objective standards that you'd be enforcing, which was the, I thought the, the number, we thought the number of valets being that standard, you know, as opposed to trying to put, you know, a criteria like, you know, a patron only has to wait, you know, 10 minutes to get their car, something like that, which is, you know, more of a subjective problem in terms of putting something like that in a condition.
Right. And I'm not saying that every bit of what's in here is, is an issue. I, you know, I appreciate the, the standards, but, you know, inspection, monitoring on 48 hours, not less than 48 hours written notice. You know, two days is enough time if you're screwing up to, to get your act together so that you can be monitored by somebody who's going to be coming in and observing, which kind of defeats the purpose of being able to monitor, you know, what's going on. You really need, if there's a, if there's a problem that's occurring, the town really need to come in and monitor when that problem is occurring to see exactly what the problem is, not two days later. That's just one example, you know, of, of, of some of the difficulties, you know, that I, that I, I find with, with accepting this as a whole. And I don't know whether or not the board is really prepared to sit down and, you know, go through this and edit out what works and what doesn't work and that kind of thing.
John, I have another question. I mean, if the, the standard is the number of valets, how are we getting that number counted?
It, it would be in the reports, because there has to be a record, obviously, of the valets having been, you know, figured time cards or otherwise, that, you know, you paid somebody to be on site.
How do we verify those reports if we have to give you two days' notice before we come in and observe what's going on?
Well, I don't, I don't know that this completely, I mean, I guess if you're alleging that the applicant's falsifying records, I'm not sure that this limits you to not being able to investigate that further. Again, the, the timelines that were put in here were, you know, just something baseline to work off of. And again, or at least just from my perspective, speaking for the applicant, it'd be, you know, the idea of the 48 hours' notice is not to fix a, a problem. It's just a, you know, sort of idea of like, we're coming in for a routine inspection, you know? Somebody will let somebody know so that, you know, there's, I don't know, it's just, you know, baseline. There's people in the garage to, so that, you know, at least things could be made safe for them. But that's, that's, I, I realize there's a, there appears to be a trust issue which I'm, I'm struggling to try to figure out how to fix, but I.
Things should, things should always be safe for people in the garage, because that's an integral part of the operation of the garage. If it's safe for the pedestrians who are coming in there getting their cars, it's going to be safe for somebody who's standing around and observing what's going on.
Well, I guess I would say.
That's all I see this, as somebody coming in and, and observing what's going on and why they have to give, would have to give two days' notice. But again, I don't want to get bogged down in.
And Mr. Chairman Kelly, is the 48 hours' notice is the, is the breaking issue in here? I'm sure that's not really an issue.
It's not the, it's not the breaking issue, but it's, but it's one of, it's one of several issues that, you know, again, I would, I would look at this and say, okay, if, if we're expected to work with this, if we were gonna work with this, if we wanted to work with this, we'd have to restructure some of this. And some of it, to me, some of it would have to go out, and then some of it would have to be restructured. Again, these are, you know, we're keeping, I'm keeping in mind that these are conditions that would be part of a resolution as opposed to a contractual agreement between the applicant and the township. So, you know, again, I would encourage other members of the board to speak up at this point to, to give their opinion about what they think about these potential conditions.
So I have, I have a question, John, if I may.
Please do.
So I, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that Elcor is in the business of garages. So our contract would be with Elcor, which I would imagine, I mean, I'm just speculating here, that they will sell this garage once it's done. You don't know that. I don't know that. But what conditions in this agreement would enforce it if we have new owners of the garage?
The site plan approval and the condition runs with the land, so it would be subject. The requirements would be put upon anybody who subsequently purchases the property if that were to happen in the future.
So that's not an issue that we would have a contract extensively with Elcor?
So, yeah, I'm sorry, Arthur. Yeah, the way we were visioning is it's not a contract. It's, these are conditions of a site plan approval.
Right. And Elcor is somewhere in the background. The applicant before you is the Montclair Acquisition Partners LLC.
Which is Elcor, basically.
One thing that, that struck me a little bit about it is that we seem to leave out the fifth floor. And I get there's some intricacies regarding the hotel and how they contract with the valet company that happens to be the same valet company that MAP contracts with. But if part of the capacity of the garage is the fifth floor and the ability to properly service that, it would seem to me that the fifth floor also needs to be mentioned in, in these conditions. And, you know, if I look back at my notes, I believe Mr. Sokish talked about, Sokich talked about having six to eight cars per valet for a hotel-type operation. So I know that gets a little bit more tricky in crafting the language around here, but it seems like the fifth floor would also need to be addressed.
One of the tricky issues, and I can let Mr. Nice speak for this, is, is just that, you know, the hotel owner is a separate owner. So the, technically speaking, they're not a party to this application. So therefore, they, they wouldn't actually be subject to any conditions that sought to impose any obligations on them. The, the hotel approval sort of stands separate. There are valet parking, the fifth floor. This application does, of course, cover the fact that the floor plate's been expanded. So it increases the valet capacity, the fifth floor, from, I think, 123 spaces to 147 spaces. But it, you know, it's, unfortunately, it's, otherwise, it's, it's a separate issue in terms of, you know, trying, trying to impose a, a specific condition of approval related to the fifth floor and how the hotel operates its valet.
So do we just, do we discount those additional valet spaces? The, the difference between 147 and 123 for the fifth floor?
I'm sorry, Mr. Brodak. I didn't, I didn't actually catch or understand the question, if you.
So what do we do with those extra spaces? I mean, that's part of the parking plan that the applicant put forward in this hearing is that there would be additional valet spaces because of the slab extension, if it were to be granted by the board. So how do we address those as part of any sort of condition? Or do we? Or do we just say they don't exist and that reduces the overall capacity of the garage?
Well, I, I don't know that it's that they don't exist, they certainly exist. And I think the assumption is that the hotel is, has an interest in making sure that it has parking for its guests. So presumably, they're going to take advantage of them. And the fact that, it's not that the hotel approval limits the hotel to only park 123 cars. And now there's, you know, some limbo where they can't park additional cars. I mean, certainly, they can park the 147 cars on the fifth floor. And presumably, the hotel's own reporting requirements will, you know, discuss, you know, the occupancy and the use of those spaces in the future. It's just that the, I guess, the, the elements of this condition of approval, which require the applicant, in this case MAP, to come and meet with the structure parking subcommittee or talk about the applicant maintaining adequate valet staffing at all times, which becomes an enforceable condition of approval against Montclair Acquisition Partners. Those conditions, strictly speaking, stand only as to Montclair Acquisition Partners. I, I don't recall what the hotel approval says in terms of its valet parking, you know, in, in terms of enforcing that. But, you know, the, it's, it's really just a structure issue in my mind. The hotel now has some additional space for valet parking, and I think it's fair to assume they're going to use it.
Well, but, but, and I, I agree with that, but here's where I'm struggling. And I, look, I don't know how to solve it here, is that, you know, you've presented a parking plan that says we can put 692 cars in this facility. And that meets, you know, the, the estimated demand by Mr. Joseph was 687. I don't have that number in front of me. So you've presented a plan that says we can do this. Part of that plan involves adding additional spaces to the fifth floor, but I don't see any sort of enforcement mechanism as a potential condition. And that's, that's where I'm struggling. And I get what you're saying, Mr. Troutner, is that it's a different entity. And, you know, I also don't have the, any sort of resolution for the hotel property in front of me. But somehow, if you're saying you can do this as the operator of the garage, I think we're looking for some enforcement mechanism to say, you know, or some way to check and say, yes, you did it. And you, you did highlight earlier this evening some of the challenges with, you know, timing, you know, not being a really great metric to use. So how do we enforce, you know, how do we look at that operation of the fifth floor to be able to be sure that, yes, you can meet 692, should the demand be there?
So again, we, I, I guess, and I, I think we may be saying the same things. So we've, we've shown the floor plate is extended in the, in the site plan. And we've shown at least a detail as to how valet could be accommodated on the fifth floor. I, I know you're not asking this question, but I'm just throwing this out as just sort of the supposition. I can't really answer the question if the question was, how do I know the hotel's really going to use those parking spaces or that that space that's available for valet? I guess that, strictly speaking, I can't answer, other than to say the common sense, which is they have the space, they want it for their resident, for their guests, they'll use it. And we've shown that, you know, it exists and exists in a way that it can be used. So in that way, you know, our, our, our postulation is that if the demand for the garage hits 687 spaces and a good portion of that demand related to the hotel guests wanting to park on the fifth floor, the space is available. And I, I'm, I'm not sure that actually answered your question, but I'm, I'm trying to, I, but, you know, we're, I'm somewhat constrained by the fact that, you know, we're, this was a minor site plan approval to extend basically the floor plates. And we've obviously attempted to address the valet, but because of the way this redevelopment developed, you have different entities which are, you know, the hotel versus the Valley and Bloom buildings, you know, versus the owner of the Ardra deck.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that quite answered my question, but as I said in the beginning, I don't have an answer for it or a solution. So, you know, I just, I'm throwing it out there as a question that's unresolved at the moment in my mind.
The other thing I'd say is we're, you know, again, we're, we're planning for worst-case scenario, which I, you know, I understood, and that's been addressed before. The, the, you know, the, the usage of the garage pre-COVID, you know, but while the period of time of the hotel was operating suggests that there's ample parking. So I, but I don't want to rehash all that.
Yeah, I'd rather not go down that road, because I don't agree with those, with those assertions.
Mr. Chairman, when I, when I joined last week, I was told by Janice that I, I can't participate in this one because I'm kind of joining a show already in progress. Is that right? So if, if, if I can ask a question, I will, if not, I'll shut up.
As a board member, yeah, that's, that's correct. We've closed the public portion of the hearing. This is a, a board discussion. And because you were not sitting during the presentation of all of the evidence, your participation technically isn't, isn't allowed.
Okay.
Mr. Jacobson, I just want to confirm that you have not listened to the proceedings of this application at all, have you?
I have listened to some, but not all.
Okay, without, if, if you could certify, for example, that you had listened to the tape of the entire application, then you would be in a different position.
Understood.
Well, if nobody has anything further to say about the, this discussion on proposed conditions, is there any further comment from the board with respect to the application itself? Does anyone wish to make a motion? And the silence is definite.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, the board, and this would be contingent upon Mr. Troutner's consent as well, but would the board want the attorneys for the board and the applicant to go back to the drawing board and try and recast these proposed conditions in an effort to help move this vote along? And I just throw that out.
I appreciate that. Arthur, again, I'm not sure that that would necessarily help. And, you know, I can say for myself that, you know, in looking at what you guys presented, you know, I appreciate your efforts. I could see some things that I might accept, some things that I might not accept. At the end of the day, I still have concerns about even whether these conditions, you know, resolve all of my concerns about the parking. You know, and I don't want to kick the can down the road, so to speak, for the township to have to deal with this, you know, at a later date, should my concerns prove true. So I will make a motion that I'm sorry, I'm pausing here because I'm trying to see if there's any way that I can work through this reasonably on the fly here to, to parse out what I might think is good for the resolution. And to be honest with you, well, I'm going to give it a shot. I will make a motion to approve the application with the following conditions. That, you know, in terms of the first one on the possible condition, possible resolution conditions that was drafted, we can keep the first one, says absent an emergent of circumstances affecting the operation, the applicant shall not close or deny public access until vehicle occupancy for the entire parking garage reaches 650 vehicles. I would propose a second condition that, and I'm not sure whether I can do this, but I'm going to propose the condition anyway, that the parking garage not accept cars to be parked by the hotel unless the hotel is maximizing the management of the parking on the fifth floor to achieve maximum usage. Only at that point can any overflow from the hotel parking be managed to the other floors. As a third condition, the applicant will maintain adequate valet parking staff at all times. And that means at minimum, there will be at least one valet attendant available for every 35 vehicles parked by the applicant on the fourth and sixth floors. We can keep the language that's in Section 2 of the proposal that we discussed earlier with respect to the record-keeping. Janice's question, these detail, the, the way that this is written, it says that the reports should come to the board secretary. If the town is going to enforce this through the building code and the building department, would it be more appropriate that the reports go there?
No, the building department won't have, this will not be involved in this. If it comes to me, I, I'll be able, I can manage it between myself and the zoning officer who's in my department.
I see, okay. Then, then we'll keep that language as it is. With respect to the applicant, the applicant will permit the township to make onsite observations and conduct parking account, parking counts on its own. And the, no language in here about 48 hours' notice. Again, I'm, you're making observations and counting spaces. It should be safe for somebody to do that at all times, and I think it's critical in order to find out if there's a difficulty, that somebody make observations when difficulty is occurring as opposed to when, after some period of notice, then they can come in and check. And the township, I don't think we have to put any language in about the township's ability to enforce as a, if, if this, if these conditions aren't met, that's something that the township has the right to do. So we don't need to put any language in about that. Art, do we have a record of other conditions that were mentioned during the hearing phase?
Yes, I think so. You know, I don't have any other conditions other than the, the notation of the performance standards, which at that time was couched in the concept of the average retrieval times. That was what my notes said about that.
Right. Right, and, and we're addressing that by staffing. So I don't have any notes on any other conditions other than our standard conditions that would go along with a application like this. So that's my motion, that we approve, subject to the stated conditions.
Now, if I had some questions or perhaps revisions to that, John, should I second the motion to open it up for questions? Or would you want to take those now?
Yeah, let's do it now, let's do it now.
Okay. In terms of reporting, I think what we have in front of us on the screen is for three years of reporting.
Yes.
I'd like to extend that to maybe seven years, just because I, I just don't think in the next three years, we're going to see this, you know, huge increase in the amount of travel and usage of the garage that I, I hope we do see. That would be one. And two, I think we had talked about, I don't know where we came to any sort of conclusion on this, but about having the plans reviewed by, is it the fire marshal? For kind of safety, life safety, parking safety, and perhaps fire safety? I'd like to have that as a condition of approval, should this be approved.
Okay, I'm, I'm for both of those. So that's a revised motion? So is that a second?
Say, that's a, that's a second to the revised motion.
Okay. Any other discussion points from the board with respect to the motion?
Well, I, I just have a question, and I, it's just, I don't recall. Did we have a landscaping plan for the sidewalk?
Yes.
We do?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was part of the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Was that the plan that had Liropee?
Yeah. Yep.
And I also forget, so the cars will be coming out onto Orange Road, correct? Is there any distinguishing marks in front of the driveway so that a pedestrian would immediately know that there's cars coming out? Like any concrete changes? Or do we need, do we think that something like that might be needed?
That wasn't, that wasn't discussed as part of the application.
All right, so we can't discuss.
I think the thought was that this was a parking garage and it was pretty obvious.
Well, many times, they have sound that comes out, the sidewalk changes its pattern. You know, you've got a couple of schools around there. Kids might not be paying attention. I, I don't know, I'm just trying to, I, I know maybe I should have asked this before, but it's just occurring to me now.
And I know that was part of the application just to the north that we heard fairly recently. But I, I don't recall anything about it here.
Well, if we want it for the north, shouldn't we want it for here?
We can add that in so that there'll be change in how would sufficient, would it be sufficient to have changes in the sidewalk to notate? Would it be sufficient to have changes in the sidewalk to notate, you know, cars passage? With a public garage like this, you know, the entrance is pretty big, it's not, and it's not concealed. So do we need, do we really need an audible warning?
Just throwing it out there, to me, you know, you have kids walking back and forth who may not be paying much attention if you have little. When the arm goes up for the barrier, I guess there's a barrier there. If there's a sound of, or lights flashing or something that indicates cars are coming, that might be a good idea. And is there, are there any mirrors or is the view clear for people leaving the garage that they can see the sidewalk easily enough? And anybody walking?
I think, I don't think that issue did not come up, it did not come up as an issue by, in reviewing these plans by any of the board experts. So I would assume that there was not a sight distance issue.
Again, it's pretty opening, it's pretty open in that area, there's no obstructing structures or. Plant, plant material or such, it's, it's pretty obvious it's a entrance to a garage. Doesn't look like anything other than an entrance to a garage. And it's pretty wide.
Pedestrians not paying any attention to traffic coming and going, it would be nice to have something that would maybe. Alert them to the fact cars could be coming in that, if we didn't discuss it, then this is inappropriate, I withdraw this, but.
My only reservation about this again is that, you know, we have similar situations operating other places in town. Where again, this is a parking garage, it's not necessarily a string of buildings where somebody might not. Think that there was a garage door opening, it's next to the hotel. Porcocher and it's, you know, pretty obvious that there's traffic coming over this area. If you have a, if you, every time a car goes in or out, you have, you know, a chime or noise. You know, that, that in itself could be considered to be disturbing. You know, to the people across the street, you know, the people who are living in the build, you know, so. So if you, if you're saying that, you know, yeah, we can, I think a change in the pattern in the concrete. Is sufficient warning. You know, just so that people know, you know, will take notice that, okay, that this, this is the driveway portion as opposed to just the sidewalk portion. So we'll amend, we'll amend the conditions to include that. Anyone else have any comments? Hey, doesn't appear to be, so Janice, I guess go around.
Okay. Vice Chair Brodak.
Yes.
Ms. Lockman.
Yes.
I'm going alphabetical, that's why. Counselor Schlegel.
I will abstain.
Mayor Spiller.
Yeah, I'm also going to abstain, and I think it's, you know, listening to this, and I think everyone probably feels the same way here. I seem to hear a lot of people who first heard some of the applications. Related but not specific to this matter, it's quite some time ago, and there seemed to be some conflicting pieces around. What was allowed, what shouldn't have been allowed, what was promised and what wasn't, so I certainly a lot to sort through there, but as it relates to this specifically. I will abstain, thank you.
Ms. Willis. Carol, you're muted.
I'm sorry, yeah, I just realized I was muted. I'm going to abstain.
Chair Winch.
Yes.
And Mr. Gilmer.
Yes.
Okay, we've got four yeses. So that's. That's it?
Will the minutes reflect that I was not allowed to participate in this one, please?
Absolutely, that you, yes, you couldn't, neither you nor Mr. Graham. Were, had the, listened to all the, the 12 meeting, the year of testimony. Is extensive. If you give me a moment, I have to contact Tony to let him know to come back on.
Thank you, everyone, I appreciate your patience, I know that was a, our arduous journey and we appreciate your time and consideration.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trauner.
So if we take a short break, let me get Tony, okay?
Okay, we'll take a five minute break. Break.
Okay.
Hey, John here.
Okay.
All right.
So the. So the next item on our agenda is a referral from the council and the planning board. I think this is probably the third or fourth time that I'm presenting these ordinance changes to you. But what happened was the council made some slight modifications. And so what you're going to hear is a little bit different from what you heard previously, and it has to do with our inclusionary zoning ordinance. This originated with the Housing Commission, they wanted to change the language with the, about concerning the design and construction of affordable units. Essentially, the change states that all affordable units shall comply with the applicable rules and guidelines, that's already in there. But the new, the new language is that the new, the new unit shall be designed and constructed to be substantially similar in size and quality. As the onsite market units unless specifically permitted otherwise by the approving board. That's the new language, it's something that you're familiar with because you know in these. Multi-family projects, we spend a lot of time talking about the size of the units, the design of the units. I just want to report to the board that I took two members of the Housing Commission on a tour. Of the new affordable units at Two South Willow Street in the Seymour Street project. And they were very pleasantly surprised about the size of the units, the quality of the units. They were scattered throughout the building. And I think that the consensus after the tour was that it really met the intent. Of our program to provide quality affordable housing that you cannot distinguish from the market rate units. The second change. And we talked about this before is to increase the cash in loop subsidy. This really isn't used all that often per our ordinance. We want or we require developers to build the units. If they don't, are not required to build the units and they pay a development fee equal to a percentage of the equalized assessed value depending upon the type of project. This cash in lieu contribution only applies when we calculate a fractional unit. So if the inclusionary zoning says you have to provide 2.5 units, we then. Calculate the subsidy, the financial subsidy for that 0.5 unit. Previously, it was 148,000, that was based on numbers that were calculated by the New Jersey Council on Affordable Housing in 2008. And we adopted it in 2009 for our housing region, but we never changed it. So what we did. Rather than. It doesn't really require an extensive study. At this point, it's not used all that frequently, essentially what we did was we took the number in 2009 and brought it up to 2021. Standards using. I think I have it in my report that's attached here.
I think it was RS means.
Yeah, RS means, using the RS means. Which gives you the historic construction level, so you could compare the 2009 level to 2021. And applying that brought that number from 148,000 up to 197,000.
Hey, Janice, just a question for you.
Yes.
Just round that number up.
I don't know.
To $200,000, it seems kind of wacky, it implies a scientific and precision that probably is not there in that number.
Well, it's a fraction, you know, you, when you take the fraction and the, and the calculations in the RS means tables and you apply it. You get a very specific number.
Well.
The number in, the number in 2009 was a very specific number, it was not rounded up.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so we were being consistent with the way it was originally developed in 2009, which is a very specific number.
But in 2009, you rounded it up to 148.
No, in 2009, it was 148,683. That was the number.
So you rounded it up, you rounded it down then. I'm just, I don't want to argue about this, but it seems.
No, we didn't, that was the ordinance in 2009. Established a subsidy at 148,683. That's what the ordinance said. Okay. So, um, does the board have any comments on this? In my opinion, I think it's consistent with the master plan and the goals and objectives of the master plan. To ensure the quality of the afford, of the affordable units. And provide the means by which we can continue to. Manage and implement our affordable housing programs by appropriately increasing our fees to reflect current construction costs.
So Janice, everyone has to build the units, right?
Yes, we're not changing that.
Yeah, well, really, I mean, this is like my comment, but cash and loot sounds like you can give them cash instead of building the apartments. It's kind of a way, it's a strange way to phrase it.
That's the language that's in our ordinance right now, we're not changing the language, the only thing we're changing is the amounts.
Well, it just seems like you give, it just seems like you give money instead of building the unit, but if you build, if you have to build a unit, I get it.
Right, you're not seeing this in the context of the full code, section of the code, which specifically states that you must build the units.
Okay.
Are there any other comments from the board?
I would just reiterate my objection to that number, just round it up to 200,000.
Okay.
Well, I'm not in disagreement with the, what we have here, I think those are both very good changes. And I get the impression that it's going to be a sort of an odd number anyway, because this relates to a portion of a unit. So if you were going to build six units instead of five, that you would have. That extra unit as a portion of the requirement for five, so it's going to be an odd number anyway. But one of the things that I'm noticing is that we improve in one way, in that we are increasing the size of the apartment and. Providing a higher amount, but at the same time, there seems to be a new trend in how housing, housing is. Providing for parking, it used to be that the parking was included, so that one who got an affordable house also got a parking space. But now it seems that the builders are taking out parking as a separate amenity and charging for parking separate. And my question is, when people have an affordable unit, what happens with their ability to get parking, does that sacrifice along the way?
Carol, it's a very, very good comment, and at the Housing Commission meeting last week, we discussed that. Because we've been concerned about that, and the housing, our administrative agent, who I have to say has done an excellent job with the township. Gave some very good advice, and this is all they do, they manage affordable housing programs. And she said, really, it's. It should be part of the resolutions of approval. It's not something that you can write into your ordinance, this is what we were told, that when the boards approve these inclusionary zoning projects. that the resolution should include a statement in there that the parking is not an additional expense for the tenants or the owners of the affordable units.
That would be good.
So if we make that what do we make that practice moving forward? Excuse me, what is it? What does she base that on?
What do we base that that requirement on? Don't we need? Don't we need an underlying basis in order to to make that to impose that requirement?
Uh, that was not well, not the context that she's because we were talking about the ordinance. And she said, in her experience, she has not seen an ordinance that states that in there. She says, in her experience, it's most successfully achieved by making it a condition of a resolution.
Does that mean you have to get the applicant's consent for that?
Yes, and you know, if the app, yes. If the applicant wants to get their approval, the assumption is that they will consent to that.
But shouldn't they know that ahead?
But they don't have to.
That they it's not in our ordinance right now. And I like I'm basing it on her experience. She hasn't seen it in any of the inclusionary zoning ordinances that she's worked in and her firm has worked in.
Does that mean that we couldn't put it in ours? Is there a prohibition against putting that requirement in?
Um.
Would it invalidate our?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. I could reach out to our affordable housing attorney and find out.
Yeah, I mean, I would think when we impose conditions, you know, there has to be some ostensible grounds to to impose a condition on. You know, safety or, you know, community benefit, you know, township, public benefit, something. And imposing, you know, saying that we have to include parking, I would be curious about what we could use to ground that kind of condition on. And if there isn't, you know, it would be easier if we could say, you know, the ordinance requires it. So that's why it's a condition, you know, it's it's part of the ordinance.
So my suggestion is that that is something that I can work on separately, separate from this ordinance. I wouldn't want to hold this up.
Agreed.
While we work on the this issue about parking, because this has come up at a time, time again. And I know it's an issue, so we'll make this a priority to work on.
Hey, Janice, just a question.
Yeah.
Doesn't don't we somewhere have a list of things that developers need to check off? Like that they're going to use native plants or that they're going to have silver lead certification?
Well, that's a checklist. That's a checklist item. This I don't think you wouldn't. This wouldn't be a checklist item. This would be you'd have to if what we're talking about is it would have to be actually within the content of the ordinance.
Yeah, but I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, you're you want to put this as a condition. And that's after we add the conditions after we've gone through the application. I'm saying that we need to give developers some kind of heads up that this will be a requirement that the parking will be included in the rents for affordable.
Right, and in order to put it on the checklist, you have to make it part of the ordinance.
So it's part of the ordinance, so we.
You can't. Yeah, we can't. We can't make out make it a checklist requirement unless it's in the ordinance.
So there's no way we can give them a heads up unless it's in the ordinance that
Right.
this is our stance on this.
Right.
I just noticed that our website says that native plans are strongly encouraged in development applications. So I think that that's the same kind of issue, the same kind of problem. By the way, I refer to those as the Brodoc amendments to my resolutions. Who is the affordable housing attorney for the township?
Ed Ed Schmier. Ed Schmier. You know him?
I don't.
Okay, well, he specializes in affordable housing, so.
Yeah, and so I'd like to consult with him myself, because if if there is a way to include it in our resolutions, I would like to do that.
Well, let me first reach out to him and have a conversation with him. And then we'll then we'll see and I will I'll see where where that goes. And if we need to hook him up with you, we can do that.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any other comments on this ordinance? Is there a motion to to submit a report to the council in support of this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. The next item we have on our list is the committee. Excuse me?
Committee appointments.
Committee appointments, yes. So we have three openings and we may be developing, I guess, another subcommittee, which would be the structured parking subcommittee. But for tonight, there's three positions that are open. I did board members, I did meet with our two new board members last week, Mr. Graham and Mr. Jacobson. So I talked about the responsibilities of the various committees. The one that is most critical right now is the Development Review Committees, because we have a meeting this Thursday. We meet once a month. And but every but all of these positions are really fairly critical. So I guess I'd like to start with, are there any volunteers for sitting on the Development Review Committee? Which is really the preliminary committee for reviewing site plan applications and conducting and approving or denying public hearings on minor site plans with no variances.
What time does that meet, Ms. Kelly?
It meets the first Thursday of the month at seven o'clock.
At seven o'clock, yeah. The only concern I have is I'm volunteer baseball coach for my son's coach potentially on Thursdays.
Is this Mr. Graham?
Yeah, it is, yes.
Yeah, you're you're you already have the planning board and the Historic Preservation Commission. So I don't know if you.
So I'll step back from this one very well.
Three meetings a month.
Fair enough. I'll step back.
Um, is there anybody else who want who would be interested in sitting on this committee? We don't. The meetings are not very long. They're usually done within an hour or two.
And it's other people from the zoning board that are on this as well.
Well, see, it's one member of the zoning board, two members of the planning board. It's myself and the board engineer.
And there were two new members and the other one has a has a solid excuse. I will. I will step forward.
Okay.
And for what it's worth, I I, as I was looking at this, the one that I thought would make some sense, so I could learn a little bit more and, you know, get get a better education would be the revisions committee. If the chairman will have me.
Is there anybody? Any? Is there anybody else interested on the revisions committee?
Looks like you're two for two.
Okay.
You didn't jump for joy there, John, but you know.
And the Personnel Committee really meets at the end of the year to talk about our personnel for the coming year. And whether or not we're satisfied with our board experts and whether or not we should go out to, you know, seek new experts, that kind of information.
Janice, I thought I was on that already with Councilwoman Schlegel and the chairman.
You're on the nominating committee automatically, but mayor, this is Mayor Spiller. If you want to be on the Personnel Committee, that's that's fine.
I just thought an earlier version of these that I saw, I was on it. I'll have to check.
Okay. But if you're following, do you want? Do you want to be on that committee? Because I could certainly add your name.
Yeah, right.
It's not a heavy lift.
No, I know. It's one through the year. So yeah, yeah, sure. That's fine.
Okay.
And could I say something? So I'm on, there's nine committees, one, two, three, four, five. I'm on five of them. I wouldn't mind getting off one of them if Michael wants to jump in.
Oh, now I got to review the all the committees, Carmel. I got to. Are you trying to jump off one that?
Maybe I give you the option to whatever one you wanted to be on. It's up to you. I mean, you want to think about it. That's fine. I think we can.
Yeah, I want to review it first. I hadn't really considered some of the other ones, but I appreciate it. Thanks. Thanks, Carmel.
Okay.
Okay, and see, and those other committees, the zoning, the zoning committee is pretty busy this year because we're taking the time to review our zoning ordinance. The Master Plan Subcommittee, well, you know what? That's been pretty busy today. Pretty busy, pretty busy this year because we're evaluating our our master plan.
Yeah, we have fun. I was just going to say, we have fun on the Master Planning Subcommittee, so.
So Mike, if you want to think about it and get back to me, that would be fine. You know, Carmel's made the offer to to give you one of her, one of her many.
One of many. I appreciate it and I will. I will absolutely get back shortly with.
I mean, I don't know if there's any action that's going to happen on the bylaws subcommittee. But that certainly wouldn't be a bad thing for an attorney to be on.
That's true.
So just think about that.
I I heard that and that's, I mean, I'm fine with that, too. I mean, it I'm if if nominated, I will run and elect that I will serve, so.
Okay. That's a pretty quiet committee, but if you're on it, I bet it won't be.
You know, at one meeting, I've already got a reputation. I got.
So speaking of the Master Plan Subcommittee, that's a really good segue to our next discussion item. And I know, I believe we have Graham Pedo here, who worked with the Master Plan Subcommittee. Remember, is your name here?
I'm here, yep.
Okay, I just can't see it. Good to see you. Thank you for joining us.
Sure, sure. Happy to be here, everybody.
Graham and I sat down with the Master Plan Subcommittee to try and tackle some of the proposals in our land use plan that have not been implemented. The land use plan, for those of you, just to remind you, was prepared initially over a four-year period. Went from 2011 to through 2014. It was eventually adopted, I believe, in 2015. So there was a very extensive public outreach process and a lot of amendments to the draft that came back to the board at that time to come up with a plan that the board felt comfortable with. The plan has been amended quite a few times. As you go through the plan, and I gave copies of our master plan to our new board members, it's been amended just about every year, every other year or so to make corrections, to better interpret the board's position on certain changes. Well, when we got the a report from the Zoning Board of Adjustment, the 2019 Annual Report from the Zoning Board, they're required to do an annual report and send it to the planning board and the council. They sent the report and one of the issues was that the master plan includes quite a few recommendations for changes in the land use designation that were never accomplished. And for various reasons, they weren't accomplished. So what the Master Plan Subcommittee tried to do is take a look at where specifically the master plan recommends changing the zoning district for properties and then make recommendations to the planning board on, you know, with how they they feel now about those proposed changes. So to start, just as a little bit of a of a primer on this, this first slide just shows you or reminds you what our different zone districts are. The C1 Zone, which is Bloomfield Avenue, Central Business District, permits six-story buildings up to 67 feet in height with a maximum density of 55 units per acre. That's the current zoning. The master, the land use plan, Unified Plan recommends reducing the maximum height to four stories, 47 feet, yet keeping the density at 55 units per acre. Now, this is for the C1 Zone outside of our redevelopment areas. The master plan identified strategic development nodes that became redevelopment plans or redevelopment areas and redevelopment plans. And there, those at those strategic nodes is where we wanted our higher, our taller buildings, our more intense land uses. So this is what our master plan says, just to put every, give everybody the perspective of what's in the plan. We created a new zone district, which is the C3 Central Business Zone, which permits buildings up to three stories and 37 feet in height and a density of 40 units per acre. That C3 Zone covers a good part of Glen Ridge Avenue and a good part of Church Street. The plan includes the C2 General Business and Light Manufacturing Zone. That's our the existing zone district. That's really the Walnut Street area. And it permits residential, commercial, and industrial buildings up to three stories and 35 feet in height and a density of 28 units per acre. And then we have our NC, our Neighborhood Commercial Zone, which permits three-story residential and mixed-use buildings up to 36 feet in height and two-story commercial buildings up to 24 feet in height. That those those two, the C2 and the NC zone, that's exactly what our existing zoning says. And that's reflected in much of what's in our master plan. We then have these two office residential zones. The OR3 Garden Apartment and Office Building Zone, which permits two-story office buildings and garden apartments. And then the OR4 Zone permits three-story apartment buildings and three-story office buildings. So this is really, and then the P Public Zone, which is in our zoning ordinance, and we have it on the zoning map, that's just a zone that reflects publicly owned property. So going from the going from north to south, there is the the Unified Plan has a recommendation for Upper Montclair to rezone or change the zoning for this area that's circled in red. This includes the the Acme Shopping Center, the stores that are on the south side of Alvin Place and the seven-story the Belclaire Residential Building. So the the master plan recommends that we create a new overlay zone for this area with a density bonus of up to 50 units per acre. Right now, it's 28 units per acre. And an increase in height from the existing three stories to five stories in exchange for appropriate public benefits such as parks and open space, affordable housing, and similar public amenities. I don't think in my conversations with the various planning board members, but certainly with the Master Plan Subcommittee, there's not a lot of enthusiasm to make this change, to have another large building at this location. It would certainly create the incentive to redesign the shopping center Acme to make it more attractive, but you would end up with a much bigger building. So the Master Plan Committee's recommendation is to eliminate this overlay zoning proposal and keep all of these properties in the NC Zone. I don't know how the rest of the the planning board feels about this particular recommendation in the master plan. And I'll open it this this subject up to conversate, to discussion.
Hi, Janice, one question for you. So we have a zoning Subcommittee, right? So I'm just wondering how come the zoning Subcommittee is not handling this?
Because this is.
I'm just wondering, because the master plan says what it says.
Because, Tony, what we're before we even get to the zoning Subcommittee, we want to start. We want to start with the policy, which is in our master plan. This is what our plan says. And I guess, and this is, this document is owned by the planning board. So we want to see, before we take this back to the zoning Subcommittee to craft a change in the zone, this change in the zoning.
Oh, I get it. So you're just wondering, you're just looking to revise the master plan.
Right, I want to make sure that the that the how I want to know how the planning board feels about this proposal in the master plan, whether or not they want it, you want to keep it or you want to change it to keep it in the NC Zone as a part, as opposed to this new overlay zone.
But again, Tony, we're not look, yeah, we're not looking to change. It's not that.
I get it. No, I get it. No, 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 it's why I get that. It's just you look at it alter the, well, how about this? What was the, because I. What was the, because I don't know who put this in here. What was the purpose of the change to begin with?
Well, when we did, when we did the master plan, we looked at development opportunities in each of our commercial areas, particularly, particularly areas that already have train stations, and this was one of them. You could see, we had this really huge, very large parking area in front of, you know, a fairly old, not very attractive building.
So my opinion on this, this is really easy to say no to because you've got a well-established condominium building that needs its parking, its parking garage, and you have a well-established supermarket that needs parking. So, done, as far as I'm concerned. I wouldn't, I mean, you're not going to put structured parking in for that Acme. So I think this one's really easy to deny, in my opinion.
Right. I, I would agree. There's also, to increases to 50 units, and the traffic flow there is very, it's tight with the, with the traffic coming in and out of the Acme parking lot. And not far from there is the Starbucks and the, and the restaurants that are, that are adjacent to the right of the apartment building. I also, I don't, I don't want to mess around with grocery stores. We need that grocery store. And I don't, I, I, I think it's just fine the way it is right there.
Well, Bellevue and Valley is also a very busy intersection, especially on the weekends. I agree with that. But the question is, I do see the need for some kind of facelift over there. I mean, is there something else we could propose that could possibly incentivize the Acme to?
Well, Mike, the existing, the existing zoning allows for more, they could, they could develop this under the, under the existing zoning, if they could address the parking, you know, creatively. But they could build up to 28 units per acre, or a three-story building if it's mixed-use, or a two-story building if it's, if it's commercial.
Yeah, I just think the, the current, the way that it's, the unified plan recommendations are stated currently, I agree, it's just too, too much for that area.
Yeah.
But if there was some other way we can incentivize change there, I think that's a, I agree, it's a prime location for development.
Okay. You know what? We can always throw in the, you know, it, it could be, it could be a redevelopment area, an area in, area in need of rehabilitation, and it could be redesigned through a redevelopment process if we wanted to, that would, that would provide some type of encouragement. That's one recommendation that you could put in the plan.
I think we, I think we should not be messing with grocery stores right now, period, full stop.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a very viable, I mean, the condominium building is a, is a very viable, there's nothing that's wrong with that. And the Acme is what it is. So I just don't know if this would qualify as an area of redevelopment. It doesn't seem vacant. It doesn't seem.
No, it was, what I meant, it could qualify as an area in need of rehabilitation because of the age of the infrastructure.
Well, isn't that sort of the same thing to allow, or whatever, I mean, I guess, yeah.
The, the, the level of proof is much different, and.
Yeah, we discussed in our, our master planning meeting. So that was what I was clarifying, too, Tony, is that we're not looking to change. So this is, all of this is already in the master plan as a recommendation, and so we're looking to amend the master plan to do away with these proposed recommendations. And so I think we all agree on this one. Unless there's any more deliberation we need, we can probably agree that with the master plan subcommittee's recommendation here.
Does anybody want to, does anybody want to keep the overlay zone recommendation in there?
Sounds like a no.
Yep, okay.
We have a lot of these to get through is the only reason I was saying.
Thank you. Thank you, Daniel.
Great.
Directly declaring consent.
The next area that we need to discuss is Wachong Plaza. Oops, sorry. Now, when the master plan was adopted, it included a recommenda, included a recommendation that this area of Wachong Plaza, which is currently in the R2 zone, be changed to become the NC zone to allow for expansion of the business district, and they felt it made sense to, to utilize that full block, perhaps enlarge the interior parking lot as part of it. But the issue is, you know, these, these houses are fairly nice, two-family houses along, along, what is it, South Fullerton? South Fullerton, yeah, or North Fullerton, I'm sorry. So the, the master plan subcommittee for this section of Wachong Plaza was to keep this in its present zoning, which, as you can see down here, is R2, not expand the NC zone.
I absolutely agree.
I would agree, too.
Okay.
The only thing that I wondered, Janice, is, and I spoke to you earlier this afternoon, this is one area that we all agreed upon should remain in R2. Is there another in the Wachong Plaza area that had a couple of houses with the same sort of thing, very nice, two-family area? What is the other one? Because that, we kind of missed one in this.
Actually, there's two items that I want to address. This, this property right here, which is right now in the R1 zone. If you look up here, the master plan recommends that this, this property be put in the NC zone. However, when you go to our zoning map, and I think I have. Let me pull this over here. If I go to this property, now Graham, if I'm, if I, what I tried to do is I pulled this property up in Google Maps. 336 North Fullerton Avenue is the property, and it looks like it's a two-family house. Okay, so I think that this should not be in the NC zone because it's a two-family house.
Right.
However, there are one other property that's recommended. There we go. Is this property, which is 98 Wachong Avenue. We're often, some of the older, lot more longer-term planning board members can remember 98 Wachong Avenue. It came to the board for approval to, to make it into a, a show, a showcase, like a, a construction showroom. And let me get the photo of that. So I do think that it would make sense for that property, 98 Wachong Avenue, to be in the NC zone. It's the old Carl Zimmerman Building here. That's 98 Wachong Avenue.
Yeah, I remember that. Yep.
Which really, you see, there it is. It should not be part, that should be in the NC zone and not in the R2 zone because of its current use. So, my recommendation would be to move ahead with changing 98 Wachong Avenue from R2 to NC, which is what's in the plan. But change this little, this two-family house from NC to, it's actually R1. Okay?
Yeah, I thought we were changing it to R2. I, I, I know there was a second property that we talked about, and I just couldn't figure out where it was. I think that may be the one, because it's R2.
And it's our, it's actually R1 right now. It's not R2.
But you said it's a two-family house, so why not make it official?
Sorry.
Okay. All right. Then, we can, I, that's conceivable because there's an R2 right across the street.
Right. That is what we said. I, I thought there was a second one that we were, that sort of, kind of agreed that we would make it on R2.
Okay, so those are.
Exactly, Carol, because Graham took us down to the street, and we were looking across the street and all of that.
Right, right. Yeah, so there you go. Yeah.
I agree. Yeah.
Okay, so that's R2, and this will be NC over here.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, one of the things that, that we often talk about as a board is the need for affordable housing, and we sometimes forget the middle class in that. And I think that R2 houses, you know, that two-family houses are one of the ways that we grow the middle class. And I really have been fighting for the two-family houses because I think that they are, they're disappearing breed across the whole country. So anyway, thanks for catching that.
Okay. Janice, can I ask a question since we're on this photo? I see your little purse is right there by the Chase Bank Building.
Yeah.
Any movement on that Chase Bank Building? Have you gotten any nibbles?
Okay, well, I believe it's, it's been purchased by, by a developer in Montclair who does excellent work.
Great.
And I think what he's looking to do is, is make this into an office use because it's really hard to convert to retail.
Yeah.
So, so yeah, you'll see, I think it's probably going to go to the zoning board of adjustment, but there is going to be activity there.
Terrific. Great. Thank you.
Janice, is the, is the Carl Zimmerman Building currently in use for anything?
Yeah. Yeah, well, it's, it's still used by, by the contractor. He just has not, he ran into some difficulty, and he's, so he couldn't actually make the improvements that were approved by the board. I think he's gotten two extensions on his approval, and right now, we're under the Permit Extension Act, so.
I see, I see trucks going in and out of the driveway quite often.
Yeah, yeah. So he's still there.
Yeah.
So as soon as the Permit Extension Act expires, which will be at the end of this pandemic, then we'll be reaching out to him to say, okay, it's, it ends six months after the end of the state of emergency. So we will then be reaching out to him. Are there any other comments about Wachong Plaza? Okay.
So is that going to be on the thing that goes forward, the, the building we just talked about, this in the one family? Right, okay.
What we're going to do is we're going to prepare an amendment to the master plan that'll include all these changes, and we'll have to do a public hearing. So yeah, so it's going to come back to the board, but I just want to make sure we were all in agreement before we went to all of the effort of redrafting the, making these changes to the plan and doing the public hearing process.
And can I make just one comment about the graphics? You know, the idea of the black background and white writing is kind of nice and pretty to look at, but when you start to print it, it's very expensive.
I understand that. You know, I should probably make two versions because I always find the black background is good for presentations. But yeah, you don't want to waste all that ink when you print.
That's a lot of ink, yeah.
The Valley Van Vleck area, the master plan recommends that the property where the George is sitting be changed from the R3 zone to the OR3. Essentially, right now, it's in a residential zone. It's next to an OR3 zone, which is, remember, the OR3 is the two-story office and residential zone. So we thought it made sense to make that zone change, to really kind of reflect the fact that it's a commercial use. So is there any, and we never actually made that change to the zoning map. Was there anybody who disagrees with that change? Because the master plan committee recommended that we move forward with it.
Makes sense to me. I was just going to ask, those other properties that are further east on Claremont, are those that are in the R3 zone? Are those residential at the moment, or are they commercial?
They're resident, I believe they're residential. Graham?
They're all residential.
Okay. Sounds good, then.
Okay. North Fullerton Avenue. Right now, North Fullerton Avenue is zoned OR3. As you can see, the existing zoning here, which again, is the two-story office building and, and, and garden apartment zone. However, the buildings along this stretch of North Fullerton Avenue are taller. Most of them are taller than two stories. So simply changing it from OR3 to OR4, which is a three-story office building zone, is recommended to fit in with the existing character of that, of that stretch of road. I don't know, how do you feel about that change? Keeping it the same?
Aren't they more than three stories?
Yeah, but we don't have, it makes them more.
Three of deviation is.
They would be grandfathers. And I think this also includes the YMCA building, which is right now.
I guess the question is, the question is, on a teardown, would we want to allow more than a two-story building? Right? Because right now, it's only approved for two stories, right?
Right now, it would permit two stories.
Right.
Yes.
I'm okay except changing the Y. I keep the Y at C1. I think it's more consistent with the uses that surrounds it and the fact that it's connected to a structured garage, essentially, even though it's not for the Y. The Y is, that garage will stay in C1. So I'm okay with what's on Fullerton, but not the Park Street C1, right, right, yeah, right there.
Perhaps, well, the C, okay, perhaps, we, we could change that, take that out of the OR4 and maybe incorporate it into the discussion that's coming up with the C3C.
Yeah.
So hold on to that thought, because that's a very good point.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any other comments about North Fullerton? Okay. So that brings us to this next area, which is Portland Place. The master plan recommends changing the zoning along Portland Place, which has, right now, this section of Park Street and Portland Place and Midland Avenue, as you can see, it's all zoned C1, which permits six-story buildings currently. What the master plan proposes is that these areas be changed to this, what we're calling the C3C zone, which is the same zoning that we have in, along Glenridge Avenue and Church Street. Basically, it reduces the height of the buildings in this area to three stories. Now, bear in mind that the master plan calls for four-story buildings in the C1 zone. Okay, we, the council did not make that change to the content of the ordinance, but the master plan still calls for four stories on the C1 zone. This calls for three stories for these smaller buildings that are off of Bloomfield Avenue. And the master plan committee discussed it and felt that they were comfortable with the proposed change.
I would agree.
Yeah, I would agree, too, because when you think of a C, a C1 zone facing an R2, that's not a great neighborhood.
No. It's fair. Yep. Okay. So in this instance, what we can do, Tony, because you do raise a good point about the YMCA, would that be more appropriate, putting that in the C3C zone? So you'd have.
I think it would be better in C3C than OR4. Yeah.
Right.
Because I think it also lines up. Now that, they didn't realize that the C3C is going to be changed there. So then that, kind of the northern boundary of the Y is aligned with Portland Place, so I think that's consistent.
Okay, okay. All right. And then we have this little area here on Valley Road. You know, I didn't really talk about it, but what we, in the master plan, it recommends taking all the publicly owned properties, like our parking lots. You see, all our parking lots are shown in this P Public Zone. This is our redevelopment areas because they're, the redevelopment areas have their own, well, this is actually, I'm sorry, this is publicly owned because it's the police station and the lot behind it, and this is the Valley Road parking lot. So we, those are all taken out of the underlying district and put into a new zone district that we already have called P Zone. Our existing zoning has all of our, these parking lots actually in the C1 zone. So we had recommended that we take the publicly owned properties, and we just put it in the public zone because the township owns those properties and obviously can do as it sees fit with the properties that it owns. However, right here, we've got these two little properties, as you can see, that are in the C1 zone, which right now, it permits six stories. If we reduce it to four stories, it would be four stories. But this whole area is characterized by two-story buildings, at least the stretch.
Is that a store to the left? Is that a store?
This one, it's, it's, it used to be.
Frozen yogurt.
It was frozen yogurt. Yogurt gelato, yes.
Okay.
And it's got, I believe, a dentist's office on the upper floor and the frozen yogurt on the bottom floor.
Okay, yep.
So the recommendation was, rather than to have that in the C1 zone, put all of these four properties here in the. So the recommendation was, rather than to have that in the C1 zone, put all of these four properties here in the C3C zone. And the C3C zone basically permits commercial use, retail use on the first floor, office uses above, but it reduces it to a maximum height of three stories. And that's consistent with the OR, OR4 zone, which currently exists right here, which again has a maximum height of four stories, but it's office uses and residential uses. So are there any comments about that change? I believe, Graham, at the zoning board, there's a lot of interest. They wanted to-
I could supplement. Yeah, I could supplement some of the comments here. So the zoning board of adjustment had an application for, actually, if you look in the bottom right photo of this graphic, the beige building that has two storefront windows, that property is located in the office residential zone and commercial use is not permitted. There's the computer repair shop in there right now. And that property came to the zoning board of adjustment and had to seek use variance relief to put another retail tenant in that building. So the zoning board of adjustment in their annual report previously recommended that these properties be rezoned to permit retail use in the existing buildings, which are configured for retail, just so it's not so burdensome for the property owners every time they have a change in tenancy. So it better reflects the existing conditions and is more, you know, in keeping with the adjacent commercial zone districts.
And your point is it makes sense each time it comes to the zoning board anyhow, so just, let's not have them continue to keep going back up to them, so.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. The, the property owner was struggling obtaining a tenant because anybody who was interested in the space had to go to the zoning board to get relief, so.
Goodness.
Change makes sense.
Okay. Um, this is what the master plan calls for right now, which is the lot, these areas, when I say Lackawanna Plaza, I'm calling Lackawanna Plaza the road here. And it recommends that this building, which contains the office building with the really ugly parking deck that fronts right on Glenridge Avenue. You didn't hear me say that. It's not the fairly, fairly unattractive parking deck that fronts on Glenridge Avenue. The master plan calls for putting that in the, in the C3C zone rather than the C1 zone. And then this little block here, which contains these buildings on Lackawanna Plaza, the road, it recommends putting them also in the C3, C3C zone, which is the three-story commercial zone. Or the existing zoning right now is the C1 for those areas. The master plan subcommittee recommended that we not move ahead with these because things are in flux in this area, and they felt it was better just to leave it the way it is right now rather than make those changes.
Is the law, the new Lackawanna plan is going to be put forth in accordance with C1 zoning, or is it, is there any sort of redevelopment plan that's contemplated for Lackawanna?
I, I don't know.
Okay. Well, that would, that would trump everything, so it kind of doesn't matter in a way. So-
Those are separate properties from the Lackawanna property.
That's not part of Lackawanna.
Oh, I know, but I'm, yeah, but what I'm saying is the whole area could be put into a redevelopment plan. I, I understand they're different properties.
I mean, to me, timing aside, C3C makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with Keith.
Okay. So you want to keep it, is, so the, the consensus is to keep this in the master plan as the C3C zone? Correct?
I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm kind of with the master plan committee to eliminate the change, but, I, I mean, is the, is the master plan committee changing its mind here? If they're changing its mind, I'll go with it, but.
The master plan subcommittee wanted to keep it in the C1 zone and, because, again, because we're not sure what's happening in that area under the new plan.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, but if, if the master plan committee is changing its mind, say so, but if not, I think they had a right.
Yeah, I think we're sticking with our recommendation. I don't know, Carmel or Carol can, can speak up as well to this, but, but yeah, I think we're sticking with our recommendation and we-
Leaving it as, as our recommendation to not change it at this point and see what develops there. So I kind of agree with Daniel.
So what are we saying, that they can build up to six stories then?
Well, no, actually, yes, right now, they can build up to six stories. But remember, in the master plan, the C1 zone is recommended to be four stories.
Yeah, but that didn't happen. Right now it's six stories.
Right.
Right. And so my problem with that is, is that you have right next to One Greenwood, the building with the ugly garage, as you called it, you have the potential in Lackawanna Plaza development to build a six-story building there. If I were the owner of One Greenwood, I would say, right before that plan perhaps goes through this board again, you're downzoning, or you're down, you're eliminating his possibility of building a six-story building. Right?
Well, but, but the master plan isn't the zoning. It's just kind of what the zoning, what we think the zoning should look like, right?
The zoning right now is, you can build up to six stories.
Right, the master plan calls for four stories here.
And if the master plan is saying downzone it to four.
Right, but that doesn't actually change the zoning, I guess is my point.
Right, right.
Right, so it's like, even if you change these to C3C, and we approve the revised master plan, it doesn't make them C3C anymore. That actually would have to be done by the township council.
Well, I mean, I think the, if you look at both of those properties, the one on the right, let's say, the Greenwood buil, building, that seems to me that you could build that as high as six stories, though I wouldn't want that to happen. But you certainly wouldn't want to apply the same six stories to the other building on the other side of the road. That seems better at C3.
Yeah, we looked at this at the street level too. I don't know if that would be helpful, but, um, yeah. Remember Carmel, is, yeah, across from, is it the Pig and Prince there?
It's, um, the, that's a photographer's building.
Former.
That building. It was a yoga studio. There's a lot of things that have changed. The tenancy has changed over the last year.
Yeah, because I remember we went down at the level to see, I'm just trying to remember, because I remember we went back and forth, but the buildings were different, yeah, this view.
Yeah, but if you go across the street-
To the right.
Those are lower. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make those six-story buildings.
No, so it's not six stories.
What we're really talking about is the difference between four stories and three stories, right?
Four and three, yeah, we're talking about four versus three, yeah.
Does anyone know what the historic zone overlay is here?
This is in the, this is in the town center historic district, which is a local landmark district.
Yeah, that's going to be tough. I mean, that's, I mean, that's going to be tough.
Go to the corner, Graham.
I mean, that Murdock Fairchild building is a building that, and, and same with the, you know, despite the ugly parking garage, you know, that arched building is something I think that we would want to preserve.
You'll see it.
Yeah.
And it is in the historic district, so it might be moved.
Well, I don't think at the end of the day that it makes much of a difference between three stories and four stories at this point. I do understand the logic of the committee's recommendation to wait and see what happens with the rest of the Lackawanna development. So, um, rather than, uh, say that we'll make it three, do it C3C right now, and then if something happens with Lackawanna, we'll change it again. If we're going to recommend that this whole area be limited to four, um, you know, I think, I think we could live with that for now.
That makes sense.
I mean, I think it also makes sense. We just went through this whole rigmarole with 37 Orange Road, which had different developments taking place at different times. And it's better to look at this as a unified whole rather than, as, rather than making changes, yeah, I guess.
Okay.
So I think we'll, we'll endorse the committee's recommendation. I'm good with that.
Okay.
Wow, we're like 10 for 10.
You did good work.
Now, this, this little area here is at the corner of Glenridge Avenue and Pine Street. And if you can see here, everything except for that corner liquor store is in the R4 zone. So the, you got the corner liquor store here, which clearly is a commercial use. But if you look at these other uses here, these used to be storefronts. They used to be storefronts, and at some point the zoning was changed to allow the entire building to be converted to residential use. So the first-floor stores were, basically, you could see they, they were boarded up and converted to residential use. I, I think that these buildings really lend themselves to, to mixed use. The, the first floors were designed for, for commercial. And so the master plan proposes that these properties, at least along the first floor, should be changed to an NC zone, which would allow, you know, essentially a three-story building, which is what they have here for mixed use, that the first floor could be a, a commercial use.
Well, now, now you guys are in my neighborhood. I know a lot about this because two of these buildings were run by my father's relatives. So Kajano's Liquors was owned by the Lamparos. And I always had, that had a, that had like a candy store on the first floor. The building on the left in the bottom photo?
This one?
The box doesn't line up with the photo. That little building there.
I was going to say that.
That's, um, that, what's my, my grand, my grandmother's brother's tailor shop, the Richardies. Rose and John Richardy ran that until the 70s, and I don't think that anyone ever opened a store after they closed their tailor shop.
That's so cute story.
You've got to move the red box a little bit closer, move it two more buildings.
Yeah, the red box on the aerial photo, Janice, yes.
And then also, the other story is the white building right to the right of that left building.
Okay.
When I was walking to school in the 60s, that was a head shop.
Wow. You mean, so this, this box should include these two, this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's lined up right there. That, that's more accurate.
Okay. Okay, so how do you, you feel about proceeding with that, keeping that in there and proceeding with the zone change?
I think if storefronts were revived in this area, which is what the other side of, of Glenridge Avenue, you know, was filled with back in the day, it would be great.
Okay.
Good. I'm going with Tony on this.
I agree too.
He's going to open up a candy store.
Yeah, if anyone has a better story, come forward.
Yeah, really.
Uh, and Graham, I'll let you, I'll let you, you snuck this slide in, so I'll let you make the, I don't think the master plan subcommittee saw it, so I'll let you make the presentation.
Sure, so, um, just for the benefit of everybody here at the planning board, the zoning board of adjustment just recently had this property back again for a use variance request. Just a little bit of history about this site. This property was consolidated and is actually located in three different zone districts at this time at the corner of Walnut and Grove Street. The corner lot is located in the NC zone. The first lot to the south, they believe it's 111 or 109, Grove Street is in the C2 zone. And then the former residential property on Walnut Street was in the R2 zone. The applicant acquired the three different lots in three different zones and developed the site plan application for the new two-story commercial building on the lot. And given that the, the building is nearing completion, and the parking area is located in the R2 zone, the other driveway and parking area is in the C2 zone, and the building is in the NC zone, it's a little bit messy at this time. So the board of adjustment during their last meeting recommended that, you know, the properties be consolidated and be moved into one zone district just to, for a more seamless review of applications that have come before them. And it was recommended that this move to the NC zone, which is consistent with the properties to the north across Walnut Street on Grove Street.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Okay. Well, that's it for our presentation.
Great, and then Janice, next steps would be that we have to have public hearings, of course, for these amendments to the master plan in cases where we do not want to proceed with what was already there, right?
Yes, that's what we'll do. We're going to, we're going to make the changes, do the public hearing, and, and then we'll move to the zoning subcommittee and get something drafted for the council to consider.
Hey Graham, did you put the PowerPoint together?
It was a team effort, Janice and I, yes.
It was really clear. Thank you.
Thanks, yeah. No, and it, and I appreciate the feedback that we got from the master plan subcommittee to include the oblique aerial imagery with the, you know, photos from screen view, I think really helped.
It was really easy to follow.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
So the only other item on, on my agenda is a payment of the bill that we have, one bill.
I would move to approve the bill.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed, abstain.
Thank you, Keith. As always. All right, everyone. Thank you for all your hard work this evening. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yep.
All in favor?
Nay.
Abstention.
All right, everyone. Have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Good night.